Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Alright, for some reason I got a big picture here of Jonathan and no one else.
Because I have a big E door.
What am I doing wrong Jonathan? I got you in a small box and then you in a big box and then. Lisa, Wonder.
Top right corner of the black part of the screen, there should be a view button. And if you select.
Wait, say it again. Wait, wait, wait. Say it again.
In the top right corner of the black part of the screen, there should be a button that says view. And it may be set to speaker view and you want gallery view is probably what you're looking for.
Okay. I don't think you're gonna be able to see my mug. I was on something last night too, the same thing. Hang on a second, start video. Hang on a second, maybe, maybe if I do, ah. I'm sorry, I'm talking to myself, guys. Ha ha.
There you are.
There you are.
I was on something last night Jonathan with a. A presentation from a church and they. They had it all screwed up. I kept telling my wife, I said, if Jonathan was here, it would be all set.
Well, they need a little help. I'd be happy to give them a little tech support on this stuff.
Well, I was, I was, I was there as a guest and I decided after listening to the. Pastor that there would be one church I wouldn't be interested in going to. Not that he was boring, but anyway. I knew Chuck.
Hey, good. Good to see you.
Good. Wonder, I have about. I don't know, six or seven thousands of the, of the inner office envelopes. And I put them out every day when the guy's gonna come get, deliver them and then I miss them to give them back to him. Um, so I'll get them to you somehow.
Okay, sounds good.
Alright. Okay, we're still missing. Bob and John Curtis and Jim.
Bob's on his way in right now, I believe.
How's everybody doing this evening?
Hey, good. How are you Mayor?
Good.
Everybody. We'll give it about another minute, then we're gonna get.
Hello, Chaney.
Alright, let's go ahead and get started. It is. Well. Throw me off on this, but uh. December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, seven o'clock PM. This is our. City council meeting of the year and the last decision making. Council. Uh, that, of this group. The next decision making will be of our new council. Let me get to see the next, uh, the first, I believe it's the tenth. So with that, welcome everybody. Can I have roll call, please?
Mike Hillman.
Here.
Scott Penel.
Here.
John Curtis. Bob Boland.
Eric.
Art Caca Bailey.
Here.
Chuck Harmon.
Here.
Jim Clark. Thank you.
Okay, please stand with us for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance.
America.
To the republic.
And to the republic. Or what you say. One nation.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible. Justiciable. For all.
Thank you. You had a better way for. He was gonna do it, he had. We have an agenda in front of us tonight. Uh, one thing that I do mention before we uh, do the approval on this. Um, Free Maker and Lisa Manifold, uh, tonight will not be the night that actual taking on this appointment. The appointment will be at our first meeting in anyway. New council. Uh, will be the ones that will make the appointment for uh, Mayor-elect Harmon C. So I just wanna let you know that this, this will not happen tonight uh, on the agenda, okay? Alright, nice to have you with us. Uh, and for the record, we do have John Curtis has uh, joined us and is with us now. Thank you. Okay, we have an agenda. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve the agenda for December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting.
Thank you Scott, do I have a second? I can check it. Think Bob had it first, so. That's great. Okay, Bob. I, I concede to Bob. Okay, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Alright.
Hearing none, does anybody on council feel they have a conflict of interest with our agenda tonight? Alright, hearing none, we'll move to the minutes. Can I get a motion for our last meeting minutes?
Under approval, November twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you Art. Art's got the first. Did I get a second?
Second.
Alright, second. Okay, discussion. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Hearing none, we will move on. Uh, to our bills. Can I get a motion for our bills tonight?
I've moved to approve uh, the bills to December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, discussion. Any questions on the bills that we need clarification for? Anybody? Alright, can I have roll call, please?
Mike Hillman.
Yes.
Scott Penel.
Yes.
John Curtis.
Yes.
Bob Boland.
Yes.
Art Caca Bailey.
Yes.
Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Oh, Jim is with us. Uh, for the record, Mark is now on our meeting. Good to see you, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have any scheduled, unscheduled public comment? John or Wonder?
You do not.
No? Okay. Alright, at this time. If I can find it now, I printed it out. Okay, we're gonna go in, uh, we're coming out of our regular meeting. We will be going into uh, the liquor licensing authority. Uh, we do have a public hearing tonight. Uh, so what we'll do is I will go ahead and open this uh, meeting. It is seven oh six. This hearing will come to order. This is a public hearing. Before the city council of the city of Idaho Springs acting as the local licensing authority. Of the city of Idaho Springs concerning the application of Clear Creek Ciderie LLC. Doing business as Clear Creek Ciderie Taverns and Taps located at fourteen May, fourteen forty, fourteen. Minor Street in the city of Idaho Springs. This hearing will be conducted pursuant to the laws of the state of Colorado and the Idaho Springs Municipal Code. The purpose of this hearing is to receive evidence from interested parties. In order to enable this authority to determine whether the application would be approved or denied. The primary issue, whether the requirements of the neighborhood pertinent to the application are being met by existing licensing. And whether the inhabitants of the neighborhood desire to have their proposed outlet. Another important issue is the character and general suitability of the applicant to hold a liquor license. The applicant will be expected to present evidence bearing upon all of these issues. Before this hearing commences, the authority determines that the. Determined the neighborhood. I've got a different spill and it's not. I don't think I should be doing the order this hearing. Uh, I'm gonna skip down. Uh, order of this hearing will be as follows. After I've completed opening remarks, the deputy city clerk will give their administrative report. The chief of duty will give his report. Next, he will present your case. Matty or she will offer testimony, exhibits, petitions. Any other matters which he or she feels the authority should consider. Where the applicant has completed his or her case, other interested parties may. Uh, present testimony, exhibits, petitions, or other evidence bearing upon a relevant issue. Following this, the applicant will be allowed to offer rebuttal. The hearing will then be closed and the authority will make a decision. The authority will deliberate and attempt to render a decision this evening, but it may defer this decision to a later date if necessary. All testimony will be given under oath, which will be administered by this deputy. Exhibit should be marked by the deputy city clerk and then identified before being offered to the chair for admission for evidence. The chair will rule on the immiscibility of all the evidence and his or her ruling. Will stand unless objected by a member of the authority during this hearing. In which event, the question of immiscibility will be decided by an authority of the members present. A record of evidence that may be for testimony rejected. As witness, the testimony should remain in the witness chair. Sounds like you're on trial here, but you're not. So that may be cross-examined by other interested parties or by members of the authority. Redirect examination of witnesses will also be allowed. Any interested party by represented. By or any interested party by the. Represented by council. This authority may, in its direction, the present. So as to prevent repetitive, you want to evidence or examination. There is no exception to the other point. Deputy clerk's administrative file on the application will be received into evidence at the time and made it permanent. Is already open, seven ten, and we will now hear from our deputy clerk. Wonder?
Um, hello Mayor and council. You have my administrative report in the packet for you. Um, this is an application for a change of, change of license from a hotel, current hotel restaurant to a vintner's license. For Clear Creek Ciderie LLC, doing business as Clear Creek Ciderie Taverns and Taps. Located fourteen thirty-eight, fourteen forty, fourteen forty-six Minor Street. Uh, the date of this application was November twelfth, this year, two thousand twenty-one. Um, the above referenced application was published in the Clear Creek County Current on November seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. Was also posted outside of Clear Creek Ciderie as a public notice. The signs were also on November seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. I'm sorry Mayor, do I read everything in my report? This is the first time for me, guys, so bear with me.
Yes. Or Diane, Diane, you have Diane on with you?
She was.
Yeah, just go ahead and continue.
Okay. So in accordance with CRS twelve dash forty-seven, dash three one two, and twelve dash forty-seven, three one three. City staff has conducted an investigation of the statutory criteria for the issuance of a new liquor license of the class proposed by the application. The results of such investigation are as follows. Neither this location nor any location within five hundred feet has been denied an application for the same class of license within the past two years. On the grounds of reasonable requirements of the neighborhood and the desires of the adult inhabitants were satisfied by existing outlets. The applicant is entitled to possession of the premises by virtue of property lease. The zoning of the premises is HD Historic District, which permits the sale of alcohol beverages. The premises is located more than one hundred seventy-five feet from any elementary school in conformance with the Idaho Springs Municipal Code, section nine dash thirty-five. The premises is located more than five hundred feet from any middle or secondary school or the principal campus of any college, university. Or seminary in conformance with CRS twelve dash forty-seven, three one three, one D. Liquor establishments in the neighborhood are as follows. Hotel Restaurant nine, Crew Pub two, Beer and Wine one. Retail Liquor Source two, three point two off-premise five, Club License one, and a Tavern two. All state and local application and license fees have been submitted and the applicant has a city business license. Staff recommends that the application be approved and suggest the following motion. I move to approve the application for a change of license from a hotel and restaurant liquor license to a vintner's license to Clear Creek Ciderie LLC.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. That's all. Were you, just stop right there. You did great.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, I did not see any comments from the city attorney. Did we, uh, did we have anything coming from the attorney?
Nothing.
Uh, Chief of Police. Comments to make?
Um, yeah, Mayor and council respectfully. Uh, this is a business that, that uh, the community is well known. You know, is well known within the community. It's really easy to check our records to see if there's any concerns as far as. Overservice or disturbances and whatnot, things like that. And certainly that, that business does not have any of those concerns, so. The police department uh, supports the city and city staff in moving forward with the, the change. I'm available for, for questions if you have any.
Alright, thank you. Um, uh, now we will let the applicant uh, do a presentation. Uh, and we have uh, Greg and we have Evan with us from the ciderie tonight. Um, we will get you sworn in. And we will, so whoever, who's gonna be the spokesperson?
Uh, hi, hello everybody. Uh, Greg, did you see Evan there? Uh, we put together a little synopsis that explains uh, how, where we're at and how we got here.
Hold on Greg.
Can you hear me?
Greg, hold on.
Wait a minute Greg, I just wanted to see who was gonna speak because you're gonna have to be sworn in, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No problem. Let's get you sworn in before you start talking. Wonder, so raise your right hand Greg. Go ahead, Wonder.
Greg, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you please state your full name for the record?
My name is Gregory Scott Dalrymple.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you Greg. Now go, go right ahead.
Alrighty. Uh, thank you to town council and members of the community. Uh, that is considering our application for a liquor license change. Um, I'm gonna tell you a quick story and then uh, kinda just go through. Uh, a presentation so you can understand why this is being required and uh, what we're trying to do. Um, approximately a year ago, uh, we applied for a uh, slab permit and we got that. And we got that all in place. Doug Smith helped us uh, get that in. You can park a Mack truck on that thing. Um, and we uh, called and ordered tanks right after that and uh. The tank got delivered. We had to take out the front window and uh, Tom and Iker's came over uh, with their forklift. And other members of the community came and helped and uh, we got all the tanks in, in and got the window put back. And um, at that point, um, Diane contacted us. And informed us of the requirement to change licenses uh, from a hotel restaurant license to a vintner's restaurant license. Uh, due to a property specific issue, um, uh, so that we can make hard cider. Um, our current licensing would not allow the use of a back door to the proposed tank room. Um, so this is kinda, this whole thing came together uh, so that we can use the, the full property to take our garbage, out the back door. Bring juice in, um, and we don't have to use the front door only, because that's kinda what we were facing. Um, we and Diane informed us of that. We spoke to an agent from the liquor enforcement division of the Colorado Department of Revenue. Um, and the agent uh, confirmed that that was the, uh, the case, that that was the proper way to, to move forward. Um, uh, vintner's license is very unique in that two separate entities can operate under one license. Uh, the two entities being um, the ciderie and then also the actual tank room. Um, and um, move on, um. When I called an agent again today, uh, just to make sure that we were proceeding correctly. And he affirmed that that was correct. He, he stated that if approved, we would literally close one day with one license. And then reopen the next day uh, with a new license. Um, so what we're trying to do in the building is making cider is a relatively simple and very safe process. Using apple juice, yeast, and a little bit of thyme, um, spelled T-I-M-E, not the spice thyme. Um, we have consulted with expert fermenters in the business, informed alliances, and are super excited to get this whole thing going. Uh, we think we're just super ready and we've got so much support. Um, throughout the process, we've been working with Safe Built, the building department. We spoke with Brendan Penn Lee of Safe Built today. And we're hopefully days away, maybe a week or two from uh, getting our permit uh, for the remaining remodeled portion. Uh, scope of work is actually uh, pretty small. Um, the slab is in place. Uh, we need some plumbing, two hot water heaters, uh, glycol chiller, uh, a sink and a whole bunch of kegs. Um, some electric work, work. We already have three phases on the property. We'll be tapping into that uh, to run the glycol chiller. Um, that's the extent of the work, pretty much, right there. Um, and then finally, I'd just like to thank you again for considering us uh, for this change of license. And uh, thank the community for all of their help and support in our, our first uh, two and a half years. Last year, we were closed a hundred and seven days. And uh, we made it through and we couldn't have done it without all of you. So um, that's our presentation. Uh, thank you for your time.
Hi, Greg. Uh, with that, um, is there, do we have any members of the community that would uh, like to speak? To or against the uh, the proposal? Okay, I don't think we have anything. Alright, with that, um. It is now seven twenty. Uh, is, this hearing will now come to an end. And we will discuss amongst council. Alright, council, discussing. Any questions for the applicant? Do I have a motion?
I've moved to approve the application for a change of license from a hotel and restaurant liquor license to a vintner license. To Clear Creek Ciderie LLC, DBA Clear Creek Ciderie. Tavern and Taps located at fourteen thirty-eight, fourteen forty, fourteen forty-six Minor Street. Idaho Springs, Colorado for the following reasons. One, applications and fees required by statute have been filed and paid. Two, the publication.
Chuck, we don't, we don't have to read all that, just the motion. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, Bob, you got the second, alright.
I'm with the rest of the council, I believe.
Discussion. Can I have roll call, please?
Mike Hillman.
Yes.
Scott Penel.
Yes.
John Curtis.
Yes.
Bob Boland.
Yes.
Art Caca Bailey.
Yes.
Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Alright, ciderie, do you have your, change of your licensing for, so you can start doing productive ciderie? And thanks for uh, what you do in this community and being a part of our downtown in, in Idaho Springs. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you all of you. Thank you so much. That means so much to us.
Okay, alright. We will now go back into our uh, city council. Take off your licensing authority hat. Um, we are back now. For being uh, the city council and we will move to our planning and community development. Jared?
Yes, can you hear me Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. I apologize for the lack of video. Uh, John and I are having some technical difficulties, but as long as you can hear me. Uh, so before you this evening is um, what could potentially be the conclusion of uh, a planning process that began in May. Uh, with the uh, beginning process of looking at a downtown master plan. So the Plan Commission uh, reviewed this and recommended approval of this item with one condition at their December first meeting. That one condition was to remove a uh, small section that was added due to um. Due to a uh, public comment uh, in regards to camping and, and glamping being in uh, somewhat close proximity. To the downtown, trying to find a place for that. Uh, the Plan Commission recommended removing that item. Uh, in response, uh, staff has worked with um, our consultants. Uh, Janie Bostick was Studio Seed, being the primary, the lead. And I have presented a document for you that has removed that provision. So it makes it a little bit cleaner for you to review here. The other uh, minor item that uh, you would have noticed if you looked at the Plan Commission packet was that there were some red boxes in. Uh, that plan and those red boxes really indicated the changes that um, had been made since the prior. Uh, draft that the city council and planning commission had reviewed. Uh, with that, I'd like to turn it over to uh, Jay Bostick with Studio Seed to uh, give an overview of the plan and the changes.
Before that, let's, since uh, Chaney's gonna, to do a uh, um, a uh, present, presentation and talk to us. Uh, this is supposed to be under a public hearing as well. I did not get a paper for this one though, so I'm just gonna kinda wean it. So, um, so we uh, this hearing will come to order. This is a public hearing before the city council. Of the city of Idaho Springs to take test, testimony on the, uh, on the uh, the downtown master plan. Um, this order of hearing will be as follows. First staff comment, then public comment. And then uh, staff comment and then public comment. Staff comment will be Jared and Chaney will be considered staff comment. Then we'll um, hear from the public. This hearing is now declared open. It is seven twenty-five. And we will hear from staff, which we already did, from Jared, and then we will hear from Chaney. Chaney?
Hi everyone. Um, I am going to share my screen and go through. I think the easiest way to do this is actually to go through the Planning Commission version so that you can see very clearly the changes that we made to the draft plan. To be considered final. Um, so what we have before you tonight in your packet is the final with all of these edits made. Um, but I'm gonna share my screen and just walk through. Um, can you all see the, the cover page here?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so to go through the document, just real quick, we'll look for these red boxes and that is where we changed something. Um, this was just uh, changing the tense. Um, assuming if the plan is adopted uh, tonight, it will have been. Uh, um, adopted in December twenty twenty-one, so that's just updating that language. And we updated the timeline to show all of the work sessions. Um, so starting on October sixth. Um, we met with Planning Commission twice in two work sessions. We also met with city councils twice, October thirteenth and November twenty-second. And then today is the final. Um. Moving along, we um, updated uh, this uh, plan graphic to show the influence area since we talk about some of these outside. Uh, projects going on in the downtown. We wanted to kinda zoom out and show those. Um, we added. Um, we added language about how the plan focuses on downtown. Um, you know, with all of the recommendations are within really this uh this blue line. Um, but it was a recommendation of of planning commission to put in there that, you know, it does af- affect the entire community. Um, another planning commission comment was to add an overarching theme of environmental stewardship and how any future projects that are considered within the downtown should take into account um their environmental impact. In mobility and parking, we um added language that the goal of the plan, so this goes back to how it's focused on downtown, but it affects the entire community. The the goal of the plan is really to get visitors to the businesses as quickly and as efficiently as possible. And um doing that keeps the traffic out of the neighborhood, so that is considered a win-win. Um, this was a a catch from someone that this this lot was um marked as existing public parking, and it is, it is not existing, but it's proposed um to be shared, so I added that. Um, we addressed uh the parking structure. It was talked about multiple times that it shouldn't just be used for parking. And if you can activate it in other ways, either community events or retail, um, that that should be done, so we added some language about that. Um, this was a big one, so we we elevated the catalyst project in mobility um to be a circulator transit concept. And so um this uh language and um precedent images were added to uh to talk about the idea of a circulator transit that really helps alleviate traffic congestion and move people more efficiently through uh through downtown. And uh, there is actually uh HDR put together this awesome map for uh for you that is um a recommended kind of uh preliminary map of how that circulator can function, so that's really useful. Um, we addressed oversized vehicle parking and and how um we should find a location for those, because they really, you know, there are, because Idaho Springs and its location um between destinations in the mountain, there are a lot of stop-through traffic that have trailers or are in RVs. And so um really having clear signage to direct them to um to parking is key. We addressed accommodation of deliveries and how that should be handled in downtown. And tourism and recreation. We um, uh, there was a concern about removal of existing healthy trees, so we added language to save the healthy trees. Whenever, you know, you get into final design of um of Citizens Park, uh that that be considered. Um, we added language around signage and lighting. That was new land use and vitality changes. Um, included for the long-term design treatment of minor street marketplace to uh, we addressed, you know, ramps to meet the elevations of historic buildings. Um, look, having loading and unloading, loading areas and ADA spaces when minor street is um a la- does allow vehicular traffic um to carve out some space where uh where ADA spaces, you can have ADA parking or park or use that space for loading. And um, we addressed the the consideration of a one-way on minor street. It was brought up. Um, uh, ultimately, our recommendation is to uh keep it two-way because there isn't uh, there isn't uh the other one way to make it a couplet, so it's not as efficient if it's just one, one-way. And the businesses get the benefit of two-way traffic. Um, we updated uh the graphic to show those uh locations, so this is, this is actually an older graphic. But in in your final plan, we show some of those areas carved out for the parking and loading. We added language about vendors on Idaho Mall um to uh prioritize uh those, you know, to activate the the future um Idaho mall and prioritize locals and youth in the community. That was a public comment that came in that we thought was really uh, really good. Um, we add, oh, so this was what we added, and then we took out. So this was the camping hostels or other low-cost towns, low-cost hospitality in or near down downtown. This was a public comment that came in, and then planning commission as uh Jared mentioned, had concern over that, so that has been removed in the final plan. And I believe that is all of the edits. So with that, um, you have the final final in your packet with all of these red boxes taken out and everything addressed. Um, I just wanted to show you very clearly what we did in the plan to um, in the document to address comments that came from the public um planning commission and city council. Um, and that is it. And Jared, as you know, or John, um, I have issues releasing my screen in Zoom, so if you want to kick me off, we can go back to discussion.
All right, thank you, Chaney, for the presentation and uh updates on the changes. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to make any comment on our downtown master plan? All right, we'll think we have anybody. So it is now seven thirty-three. This hearing is now declared closed. And we will move for discussion to council. All right, council. Was there anybody that would like to weigh in uh or make an opinion on master plan before we get a motion?
I just thought it looked like a lot of hard work, a lot of talent, you know, as a parent there, and I'm looking forward to it.
You know, we've had uh quite a number of uh studies looking at different aspects of downtown. And it's really nice to see a plan that brings all of these together with an action plan moving moving forward, both near and longer term. And uh, I think it's a terrific job, and I I just wanted to thank Chaney and her, all of her colleagues and uh Studio Seed. And I I think they did a terrific job for us. I'm very, very happy with it.
And I will, do wonder, because I found it. It's on the back. And I would agree with the other council that uh great work uh on the downtown master plan, Chaney and your um and your group. Um, we really appreciate it. I believe that this is giving us a lot of great information to move the downtown forward here in the future. Gives us a great basis for it, great ideas, and um I'm hoping that uh this will happen and not sit on the shelf into the future. Any else?
It won't sit on the shelf if any of us can help it. I think we have any intention moving forward.
All right, can I get a motion, please?
I'd make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-six, series twenty-one, adoption of the downtown master plan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And then final chance for discussion. Roll call, please.
Mike Kilman.
Yes.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
John Curtis.
Yes.
Bob Boland.
Yes.
Art Caca Bailey.
Yes.
Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, motion passes. We have a, we have a document, downtown master plan. Great work. Okay, uh.
Thank you. Uh, just wanna say that I I don't go away after this. You have my number. I'm a long-term friend of Idaho Springs. Call me if you need anything.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chaney.
Thank you.
Give thanks to your team as well. Okay, uh, we will move down now to um another public hearing. Uh, so this hearing will come to order. This is a public hearing before the city council, the city of Idaho Springs, to take testimony on the adoption of the budget for the city of Idaho Springs, Colorado, for the calendar year beginning on January one, twenty twenty-two, and ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. The order of this hearing will be as follows. Uh, we'll hear staff comment and public comment. Uh, it is now seven thirty-seven, and this hearing is now open. And we will hear from the city administrator, Andy.
Mayor and council, I'll keep this short. This has been a long process, uh, as it is every year, very important one. You have before you the final proposed budget for twenty twenty-two for consideration of adoption. And I do want to give a special thanks to the mayor, to council, uh, to the department heads, and also to our finance officer, Lorraine Trotter, for all the help and putting this together as a plan for the new year. Thank you.
And do we have anybody from the public that would like to make comment or give testimony? All right, hearing now, none. Uh, this hearing is now declared closed. It is seven thirty-eight. And council, we open for discussion. Any discussion, council?
Uh, I just got a couple of questions, if I may. Um, I I look at it, and maybe, maybe with everything I'm sure I'm gonna ask is in there, but it was hard for me to clarify. Uh, as far as the uh water uh and so, is the revenue based on the rate of the six and twenty-four percent?
No, that will not be adopted until that, till the the new council.
That's gonna be separate, correct?
I'm sorry, say again.
Okay, that that's that's separate from this.
Yes, that is. Adopting the rates will happen with the new council. Andy?
Okay, second.
If I may, uh, just to clarify, so the the budget is uh based on the rate increases, because we have the budget for the new year. But what the mayor, uh, the mayor's correct, the the, and there'll be a separate process, the ordinance in the new year to actually uh set the new rates and adopt the new consideration of adopting the new rates.
So for some weird reason, the rates didn't get approved as you put into the uh budget, therefore then you would have to amend the budget accordingly. And we have, you have the 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 mechanism to do that, if it, okay. And secondly, um, okay. And and secondly, uh, we talked about rounding up the police um to a certain level. Is that included here in in the budget? So they that they will, you know, they will get that. Remember, we talked about going to sixty grand, I think?
Yes, that is correct. The the most recent uh changes at the at the last work session the council directed, that is included, including the uh the base uh of the hiring range for a police officer at sixty thousand.
Okay, does it, you know, I I guess is, does that adjust then to the people who have been here as well for, it does, doesn't it? I mean, everybody, okay, all right.
Yes, we we did uh make some internal equity adjustments to account for that. I did work with the chief uh to uh to make that happen, yes.
Okay, your vocabulary is better than mine. Thank you.
Great questions, Art. Thank you for bringing those forward. Great question. Is you in the house? Hey, can I get a motion?
Uh, I would move to adopt the uh twenty twenty-two proposed budget as a final budget uh for this uh coming year of twenty twenty-two.
And this is a resolution number twenty-seven, just for the record.
Okay, all right, I should have been reading that. Okay, resolution number twenty-seven. I assume I got most of that correct. Yeah, I did.
Thank you, Bob. Do I have a second? I got uh Art as a second. Last chance for discussion. Roll call.
Mike Kilman.
Yes.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
John Curtis.
Yes.
Bob Boland.
Yes.
Art Caca Bailey.
Yes.
Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
All right, we have a twenty-two, twenty twenty-two budget adopted and ready to go. Great work, council and staff. Really appreciate all the time that you put into this. Okay, we'll move to our next resol- oh, um, at this time, we will come out of the public hearing. It is uh seven forty-one. We will move down to our next resolution, and I get a motion, please.
I'll move to approve resolutions twenty-eight, series twenty twenty-one, adoption of the two thousand twenty-one mill levy for the two thousand twenty-two budget year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Uh, just this, this is a formality that we do every year. Uh, wonder, would you say something?
Who seconded? I didn't catch.
Well, I was one of them.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay. I don't know who else did.
Uh, this is a formality that we do every year when we are provided with the information from the county assessor's office. Um, and this is something that uh we do every year at this time, uh, going into the new year. Any other discussion? And roll call, please.
Mike Kilman.
Yes.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
John Curtis.
Yes.
Bob Boland.
Yes.
Art Caca Bailey.
Yes.
Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
All right, we'll move down to the next resolution. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve resolution number twenty-five, series twenty twenty-one, C dot M O U, Mobility Hub.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Discussion. I'd just like to say, uh, as count- to council again, an MOU is really not a legal binding document. Uh, but we'd like to to get the memorandum of understanding signed by different parties, especially when you're in a discussion like our our transit center has been going on for so long. And just a, just a formal piece of paper that says that this uh visioning has happened.
Sorry, mayor, we lost your audio.
You can't hear me? You can hear me? Okay, um, uh, and it says that we will continue the discussion, and we will continue to work together uh to try to uh see if there, we can feasibly and financially make this parking transit center ha- happen. So that's kind of the meaning of this document. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Mike Kilman.
Yes.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
John Curtis.
Yes.
Bob Boland.
Yes.
Art Caca Bailey.
Yes.
Chuck Harmon. Chuck Harmon.
Looks like Chuck's, Chuck?
Chuck.
I can hear you now.
Chuck Harmon?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, yes or no?
Oh, yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move down to our assistant city administrator, John. You have anything for us? You didn't have a second for it. Go ahead.
I don't have anything for you tonight.
All right, thank you, John. Um, we'll move to the city administrator, Andy.
Mayor and council, uh, you have my report before you with one request for action. Uh, one thing I might uh emphasize is that the um holiday party, city holiday party that was planned for this Thursday has been canceled. Uh, just given the, some of the tighter restrictions that the county enacted, uh, and um just to be extra safe with uh gatherings, we decided to go ahead and cancel that, so we will not have the holiday party again this year. Um, the other thing I might mention to you, because it will come up quickly after the new year, is the dedication of the it's at the wastewater treatment facility, uh, better known as a water resource reclamation facility. And uh, that will be on Friday the seventh of January. Do I have that date right? I believe that's it, Friday the seventh at ten o'clock. So we hope you all can make it. We'll have uh state officials there. I think we'll have representatives of the firm that uh provided some of the uh cutting-edge uh technology, and uh it's a, should be a a a big event, so wanted to mention that as well, but I do have one request for action, please.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Hey.
Move to approve a change order from DJ Smith and Company in the amount of eight thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars for the Horseshoe Court project, which includes additional concrete work for higher curb walls and insulation of four concrete pads and picnic tables.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Bob, second discussion.
So this wasn't on the drawings in the beginning, or they changed the drawings, or?
A good question. The, the, because of the layout, this was not an engineered site. And once we got in there, once the, the bid was put out and they laid it out, it, it, we thought we could handle it with standard curb walls. And because of the, the slope was more than the expected, the, the curb walls of the lower side need to be higher. So they did not bid that amount in, in the, that was not in the, the specs that we had for a more flat site. I mean, it's a fairly flat site, but there is a slope to it. So that was the reason for the extra concrete. John, who's not here this evening, he's on vacation, will be back tomorrow, suggested, and I think it's a good one, that we, while we're having the concrete work done in that area, that we put the picnic tables that are in that vicinity there, that we put concrete pads under them. So that's really above and beyond the horseshoe project. But we thought we'd include it since there's concrete work being done. Many of our other picnic tables in CRC Park have concrete pads that helps with securing the tables, and it helps with maintenance.
Any other discussion?
These are just the one-time, the one-time increase. What's the, the request for change order from the attorney? That's?
Oh, the other item there, that was, that was an item that wasn't in there. It's a, I'm trying to think, what does it read there, Jim? Can you refresh me?
It, it's from the, from the attorney's DJ Smith and plenty LLC request for change order. Looks like another, I don't know, $10 an hour or something. I don't know.
The only change order before us is the one in the packet, which is the, those four items, I believe. Extra concrete, the pads, and I think there are a couple of small items there.
This is regarding the horseshoe pits as well.
Yeah, but it has nothing to do with an attorney. I don't know what, not sure what you're referring to, Jim.
It's an attorney's letterhead is on.
Yeah.
It's on the back page of the change order.
Oh, oh. That's for, that's for our water attorney.
Yeah.
That's for David Hayes. That's for our water attorney. That, that doesn't have anything to do with the, that, that's nothing to do with, it's just on the back page of it. Yeah. Here's DJ.
That, that's a, a separate item. It refers to our water attorney asking for a modest rate increase.
But we didn't have that as an action item on the agenda.
No.
Okay.
I believe, I believe it's in my report, and that was just the actual letter that's attached to the report.
We'll amend the agenda, so we're not going to be able to do that tonight.
Okay.
Mayor, I don't, unless council desires, I don't believe that needs official action. It was more of a courtesy, letting council know about the rate increase proposed for the new year from the water attorney.
Okay, all right. Okay, if Carmen thinks we need to do a, a legal form on that, we can. Okay, let's finish up our motion that we have on the table right now. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mike Kilman?
Yes.
Scott Pennell?
Yes.
John Curtis?
Yes.
Bob Boland?
Yes.
Art Caca Bailey?
Yes.
Chuck Harmon?
Yes.
Jim Clark?
Yep.
All right. Thank you, staff. We will now move down to the deputy city clerk. Wonderful.
Mayor and council, you have my staff report in front of you. Just a couple of bullet points. In your packet, there's the annual Idaho Springs Cemetery Report, as prepared by our cemetery extraordinaire, Lou Howard. She is on the call in case you have any questions or praise or pride in the cemetery and love. It shows through for sure. I want to say thank you. Lou, you do a marvelous job. The city appreciates you. Including my report is also the November Safe Built Permit Report, the November sales tax numbers. There's also the certified recount results. We asked for recount for Idaho Springs ballot measure question 2B, and that had to do with the water, the tax increase for the water wastewater rates, and that recount showed no change. So it's still failed by two counts. There are two letters of intent for the upcoming vacant council seat that Mayor-elect Chuck Harmon will be vacating. And then I am also prepared and ready to sign in our elected city clerk and appointed city treasurer.
Let's get her sworn in. She's on the other side of this now. This is funny. Right?
Raise your hand. Yes. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I am Breeze.
Do solemnly declare and affirm.
Do solemnly have.
Declare and affirm.
Declare and affirm.
That I will support and uphold.
That I will support and uphold.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Colorado.
Constitution and the laws of Colorado.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Idaho Springs.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Idaho Springs.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Well and truly.
Well and truly.
And to the best of my skill and ability.
The best of my skill and ability.
Perform the duties of city clerk slash treasurer.
That I will perform the duties of city clerk slash treasurer.
For the city of Idaho Springs.
For the city of Idaho Springs.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you. Yay.
All right. And thanks for your report, Wunder. And Lou, would you like to speak with us for a couple of minutes?
It's no.
Now I'm trying to get on. I don't really have anything to say. My report pretty much says everything. So just, if you have any questions.
All right, I will say, Lou, thank you so much for what you do up there, keeping that cemetery looking as appropriate as it does, all the maintenance and the upgrades and the improvements that you've done. We really appreciate it as not only the council, but as a community, the effort and the volunteer work that you and your group have done. So I just want to personally thank you. Thank you very much. All right, any other questions for Lou?
And I just want to echo what you're saying.
I just want to say I had the good fortune of a.
Go ahead, Chuck.
Sorry, Bob, didn't mean to step on you. But I was saying, I, I had the good fortune of going through the cemetery with, with Lou, and I just had a whole new appreciation of all the work volunteers do. And also, just a, a little special treat for me was how far she stretches a dollar is pretty darn remarkable, I must say. So a big, big thank you. And it, it always looked great.
Thank you, Chuck.
I would, yes, I would like to bring up, well, first of all, I certainly echo what Mike Kilman and Chuck Harmon had said, but also wanted to, wondering if you could describe a little bit of the online Find a Grave program that will, if it doesn't already, will soon, I believe, include the Idaho Springs Cemetery.
Yeah. All of the headstones are pretty much on there, and I'm working on the people who don't have headstones. I'm putting those in this winter. So actually, it'll be a database. It's very easy to use, and anyone looking for a grave can go on there. And if there's a headstone, there's a picture. And it also tells what section and what law it's in. There's a map. So maybe people can actually find the, who they're looking for, because it's a difficult cemetery.
And yeah, there are, I don't know how many of the cemeteries in this country are on that, but it is a website you go to called Find a Grave. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's very popular. There's a lot of, a lot of cemeteries on there.
Is that right?
And it's all pretty much volunteers who put the pictures on and the data, so.
Okay, well, that's terrific. And see, one of the thing, I can't remember what else I was going to ask. Okay, thank you, Lou. Anyway, we appreciate it very, very much. Thank you, Lou.
Now it's up. All right, thank you again, Lou. We will move down to the PD chief.
PD, Mayor and Council, you have the staff report before you. I would like to just mention a couple of things. First, a big thank you to council for your support for the agency and, and giving us that, that pay increase. I'm really optimistic that that's going to help with our hiring situation. I did mention in the report that there's someone that, I don't want to jump the gun because they're not hired yet, but a young lady that's graduating from academy that we think we're going to get hired on January 3rd. So more to follow when that date gets closer. And the other thing I want to mention, just as a reminder to council, we have the, I thought the, a big shout out to the sheriff's department and to the fire department and their handling of the fire to the west of the city. It was a little scary for a lot of the residents. And one of the things that we're trying to work on is our communication with residents during emergencies. So if you have folks that are, that, that have not signed up for the Code Red system, they really need to make sure they sign up. That, that's available. The link is on the city website. It's, and it only takes about one minute to sign up for that Code Red system, those Code Red alerts. They were, they, those, that was where all the information is going out. And that really allows first responders to focus on the emergency, but have the dispatcher send out these very, you know, very informative messages on who should evacuate and who should, you know, stay in place and, and that kind of thing. So I would just remind, remind you, if you have constituents that are concerned about that, that really they need to make sure they take the steps to be signed up for the Code Red system. So other than that, I'm available for questions if you have any. Thanks.
Thank you, chief. Andy, you have something?
I might just add one thing to what the chief said, is that the Code Red is an opt-in, whereas the reverse 911 is done, unless it's changed, it's to landlines and not as effective. So really, Code Red, I, I would view, and chief can tell me if I'm off base here, but that this is kind of the next generation. You opt in, and it'll come to your cell phone or whatever device you, you register. So it, it's the, as he pointed out, this is the best way for residents to get information. But again, residents would have to take the action to go to the county website and sign up for it. Is that correct? Chief? That's very, that's very much correct. The reverse 911, 111 system is, is based on landline technology. So most people have cell phones, and when you have a cell phone, that doesn't necessarily going to work for you. So the Code Red system also allows you to receive text messages. It's completely free. You're not, your information isn't shared with, you know, telemarketers or anything like that. It's, it's completely secure. It's just for Clear Creek County. And that way, you have the most updated information and what's being put out for our county and our area.
Anybody else have any questions?
No. Oh, go ahead.
I don't have a question more comment on signing up for that Code Red. I signed up for the Code Red before, and I did get cellphone calls, and I also got emails. So I think even if it's not a cellphone or it's a computer, they will email you alerts also.
Thanks, Wunder.
That's true. You can sign up for that as an option. It allows you to do the cellphone, the email, and the, the calls. So.
Okay, my comment wasn't a question, but just a comment on your report. That one page that showed the more serious incidents that our officers are faced with was really interesting reading. And I think it brings home, you know, how valuable this, the police department is. And you've got to be wired a certain way to be a cop. I've decided after, well, I knew that, but after reading that page, not knowing what you're going to face that day is really amazing. So if anybody hasn't read that full police report, please do that. And if you would keep those reports coming with that page of your more major incidents in there, I would really appreciate it.
We will do that, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, chief, for your report. Thank you all for the report tonight. And we don't have John with us tonight, so we'll skip overhead. So we're at the close of the meeting. This is our last city council meeting, and it's with the council of 2021. It has been a great year to work with all of you and staff at city hall. And I just want to wish everybody happy holidays going into the new year. And with that, it is 8:03, and we will, you have some, Art?
Yeah, I just want to thank you and Bob. It's been great working with you, you gentlemen. I've learned a lot. I, I have a lot more to learn. So if I pick up the phone and call you guys, I hope you will share with me anything I need to know that, questions I've asked. But I appreciate everything you both have done and what I have learned from both of you. So thank you.
Thank you, Art. And if you call Bob, he'll tell you how to vote and what to vote on.
Thank you, Art. Oh, and thank you, Mike.
Get to see each other one more time in this capacity after the first year on the test. So we're not done yet. We have one more meeting. So with that, we'll just adjourn our meeting night. Thanks, everybody, and have a great rest of the week.
Good night, all.
Well, everyone be safe.